If you guys are all ready, I think I'll call it to order. The Simsbury Board of Education Regular Meeting, March 27th, 2018, has been called to order. Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hello.
Apology audience, glad you're here.
Thank you.
Moving on, Board and Administrative Communications, Isabel?
Lots of announcements. So, starting off, Squadron Line will be hosting its annual sixth grade musical on Wednesday, April 4th at 7:00 PM. This year's show is Letters to Daddy, and a version of the musical is going to be shown to students during the day at 9:00 AM. Many Simsbury High Theater students helped out and put on the production, whether it be like lighting, like choreographing, singing, et cetera. And they have enjoyed working with the children and have witnessed a sense of camaraderie grow amongst the cast members, many of whom didn't have theater experience before, so it's pretty cool watching them grow. I'm looking forward to seeing the show. I'm gonna go see it because one of my best friends is helping put it on. So, also, over the weekend, Two and Hills 5th grade students, Aiden Grady, Ellie Powers, and William Sunnick competed in the Connecticut State Invention Convention Regionals, and all three students did so well that they're going to be moving on to the next level and competing at the state invention convention. And then, many of the elementary schools, including Central and Squadron, I'm pretty sure, are gonna be having their course, band, and orchestra concerts within the next few weeks, like before the break. At Henry James, students are preparing to vote on a new school mascot, and five students have designed the mascots that the school body will vote on. I'm not so sure which ones they are, but I'll get back to you with the winner. 8th grade Spanish students are going to be participating in a Spanish field trip to New York City next Monday. And finally, April 3rd is HGMS Barnes &amp; Noble Night, and the highlight of the evening is going to be their annual Spelling Bee. Students had to qualify to be a participant in the bee, and artwork will be just on display as well. At Simsbury High School, over 300 students participated in the National Walkout Day on March 14th. We observed 17 seconds of silence for each of the victims who lost their lives at Parkland a month prior. Students Molly Grossman, Brennan McDermott, Kevin Kurian, and Jack Pipelado delivered eloquent speeches to those who participated. And students at Henry James also participated in a walk-in to the gym. And finally, the sophomore and junior student councils at Simsbury High are going to be hosting a trivia night this Thursday at 7:00 PM. All students and faculty are welcome to join the sophomores and juniors of the student council in the cafeteria for the trivia night. And there are gonna be awesome prizes up for grabs, such as pay-for-the-day parking spots, free rounds of bowling at Blue Fox Rock and Bowl, and gift cards to local businesses such as P. Beers, Ava Grayson, and more. And I have personally formed a trivia team, so we're hoping to come out with a win.
That's great. Keep us up to date on that, please.
I will.
Wonderful. Tom?
Nothing, thank you.
Jeff?
Briefly, I just attended the rescheduled day in the Hill last week, and it was, you know, it was always very informative. Representative Andy Fleishman spoke to us, and some of the issues that were coming before, you know, again, are the lack of priorities for the funding, sped funding, and removing barriers to districts. But there's 45 bills that came before the legislature this session, so that's quite a bit for a short session. So, as we speak, you know, they've only got another month and a half or so to go before session ends, so everything is out of committees, and now they will be, you know, debating the bills that are on there. But we, you know, CAE keeps track of the bills, you know, that are affecting school districts and things. And again, nothing really will happen as far as any new bills coming forward. Hopefully, they will just be able to address, you know, some of the unfunded mandates that are there now, because they do wanna finish by, finish by May. But, uh, but that's where we are. I also attended the CREC meeting, where we had some later discussion about, again, the funding of some of the CREC magnet schools, and some of the programs that districts are involved in with CREC. Again, it's, you know, this is all about funding at this time of year, so, you know, I wish I had better news to talk about that, but that's where we are until, until session ends. And next week, I'll be heading to San Antonio for the NSBA Conference for Public Education Leaders, and, uh, so this is the big conference where, the annual conference where we have about 6,000 educational leaders that will be in attendance. We've got guest speakers, 200 sessions and workshops and things, and I'll be presenting a workshop also about women in politics, and I'll be doing this in conjunction with a Women's Institute in DC, so, um, so I'll let you know how that goes. I'll also be participating in the delegate assembly, and as, as you know, the delegate assembly for our CAE conference is the forefront for our resolutions that we will, that we use for our state legislature here in Connecticut. So, we, at the federal level, at the national level, will be having a whole day of delegate assembly with resolutions that have come forward through around the country from our fellow board members, again, discussing many of the topics that we discuss on, on local levels. So, that will be our working paper when we are back in DC in January, so a lot of interesting resolutions have come forward, things that you are familiar with, some that you may not be familiar with, but I will give you a, a report in follow-up once we complete that delegate assembly, so, so that's where we are.
Thank you very much. Jennifer?
I just wanted to comment. I went to, um, Henry James had PTO meeting, and they had the SROs there, and it was fascinating. I didn't, as a parent, realize the connection between the police department and the schools, and how extensive and what their roles are with the kids during the day, and they were fabulous. There was like 30 people there, and I just, talking it up, can't say enough good things about them. It was great.
Great.
We had a Personnel Negotiations Committee meeting, but I'm gonna let Deal Sullivan provide a brief update on that to board members, and nothing else. Thanks.
Thank you.
Curriculum Committee, Matt, so for all our subcommittees are meeting, and Jeff, Lydia, and Mike and I were there. We met at the Guidance Department, and I'm kinda good, just got an update on all the programs they're working with. Of particular interest for the four of us seem to be their mindfulness exercise, and what they're doing to help our kids with anxiousness around coming to school, the stresses they face, and all of that. So, we're hoping that they might come and present to the full board on some of the steps they're taking to help our kids get through the day and continue to show up for school and be productive. And, uh, so it was a very good meeting, and a lot of great information.
Great.
So, I've been to a lot of concerts in my time at Simsbury, but last night was really one of the remarkable ones that I've ever been to. It was the rescheduled Townwide Band Festival. So, it's sort of at its base, it was a high school band concert, but then, between Lisa Abel, our high school band director, and Charlotte DeLeo at the middle school, and the elementary band folks, we had numbers that involved kids from all five elementary schools playing in a combination with middle school kids. Then you take high school kids, and all of the symphonic band, the percussion ensemble, the saxophone ensemble, everything that happens with the high school program. We have a partnership with the University of Hartford, students who come here, and so combined numbers with high school and college students. And if that wasn't enough, they ended it with a number combined with the community band. So, you literally covered generations from elementary school through senior citizens who are in the community band. And so, to Lisa, and Charlotte, and Angela Griffin, our Director of Performing Arts, it was really a remarkable evening at Simsbury High last night. Taking Mike's lead from our meeting with Personnel and Negotiations Committee that set guidance for us as we entered negotiations with our nurses group, and we had a meeting probably a couple of weeks ago to talk about the parameters in which Burke and I would negotiate around wages and insurance, and I am pleased to report that yesterday afternoon, we reached a tentative agreement with the nurses group. So, that was our only contract that we needed to settle this year. They will hopefully ratify the terms at the meeting that they're having in April, and we will bring all the details of the settlement to you at the April 24th meeting. So, thank you to the Negotiations, Personnel and Negotiations Committee for their guidance.
Thank you very much.
And thank you to the nurses who were great through the process. I really appreciate it.
I do wanna add to what Isabel shared about the Invention Convention. There are three students, I don't have their names, but they also competed and made it to the state. So, as far as I know, there are six students now going to the states, and I believe that's April 24th up at UConn at Gampel Pavilion, so that'll be exciting for our students, yeah. The other item is in your folder. It's from our technology conference yesterday, that we had over 85 teacher presenters that gave short or long presentations to our teachers in the morning. I have to give a shout-out, obviously, to Johncia Leitwinick, who oversaw this entire process in which to get this put together, and Brian Marchinkowski, who also worked side-by-side with Johncia. I have all day been receiving accolades from teachers across the district that say it was a fantastic day, the kinds of things that we learned. So, in the morning, you can see that they had various workshops that, the blue ones were workshops that they could sign up for ahead of time, and then the others were choices that they could make from 8:00 in the morning until about noon time. In the afternoon, they were then separated into their grade level, and it outlines it on the back page. It shows that the grade levels and the departments came together, and they were able to share their learning and how it connects with what they're teaching within their content curriculum at their grade level or within their department. And again, those teachers, that, one of the comments that was brought forward to me today was the fact that we were able to learn something new, and then spend an hour, an hour and a half in the afternoon trying to talk through it and apply it, was pretty outstanding. So, again, we get these printed at the last minute, so I'm sorry it's after the fact, 'cause I would've liked to have, you know, had you seen it ahead of time, but, and then, at the same time, the, um, topic is the SAMR, which is using technology from substitution, augmentation, to modifications, and redefinition. And you can see that those are coffee cups, because they also set up a coffee bar up in the cafeteria, and so teachers were able to go up there, and it was a pretty dynamic. We were there. We had, in the morning, the presentation, the start of the morning for about a half hour. We had not only Johncia and other teachers do some presentations, but four of the teachers stood on the stage for about at least 20 minutes, and presented to the entire faculty about their participation and their learning in this work. So, you know, it was really, I think, a great day. Another comment said, "Why don't, why aren't we doing this earlier in the year? We could then really apply it over the course of the year." We've done that. We keep switching it back and forth, but again, a pretty dynamic day.
This is your fourth year doing it?
Oh, gosh.
Easily.
Easily, yeah, at least, if not more.
And you've watched everyone, now we're one-to-one, and there's so much, you've watched everyone evolve from not knowing what technology was gonna be, look like in the classroom, to now looking for specific languages and lessons.
They had a huge makerspace set up in the library, and at the beginning and at the end, they had people, Jamie Seepah and Peg Rocky, that were actually talking to the audience from the library and showing them around with all the items that they had going. I happened to interact with Bob Avery, physics teacher at the high school. He was so enamored with a 3D printer and what he could do within the physics program that he spent most of the morning in the makerspace.
How many other districts do this kind of a day?
I'm not aware of others that...
This is very professional, I mean, in any industry.
Yeah.
Let alone to have this for our teachers is really...
But for our teachers to step up and do this on their own. She engages, obviously, our instructional technology team to really help her organize and put this all together, so certainly a shout-out to our instructional. We have teachers across the district that are on that instructional technology team.
It's great.
You just think about how this has changed over the years. It went from like a sheet of paper to a light. This is massive. It's incredibly impressive.
Yes, so...
Send all of our kudos. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Burke?
Just one item, just staying with the budget calendar, tomorrow night will be the Board of Finance meeting, and it'll be their last meeting before the public hearing on April 5th, so they'll be looking to move the operating and capital budgets. I'll be, be able to present the board's capital projects if they have any questions on those, and then we'll be finding out what the, what the numbers are that'll move towards a public hearing. So, that'll be Thursday, the 5th at 6:00 PM, just to make sure you have that on your calendars.
Thank you very much.
Just one thing, Lydia, you mentioned a little bit of the, the meeting you had at CREC, so we hosted here in Simsbury.
Right.
A meeting for CREC leadership to come and talk about some of the real fiscal challenges and burdens that they're under. You know, they're, they're in a model right now that isn't, isn't sustainable, and they are talking about different options and wanting to partner with districts and look at ways to problem-solve over their magnet school operations. So, CREC is kind of the arm of the chef legislation that carries out the magnet school legislation, and the state has underfunded their per pupil expenditure significantly, so they are working hard to avoid raising tuition to districts like ours, and are looking for ideas and looking for suggestions to partner. But it is a, it is a real challenge that is gonna have to come to decision-making at some point in the next few years, and I can certainly tell you that local districts are not eager to take on more cost for magnet school tuition. So, where in Simsbury, we are not a major player in the magnet school equation. I mean, it's about a $250,000 line item for us, but when you think of districts like Manchester, Hartford, if you increase tuition to those districts, I mean, you're talking about a $4 million, $3 million burden to their operating costs. So, it's really in an interesting place, Lydia, I know as the representative that sits on their board, we're gonna have more conversations about this, but there, there's gotta be other options than to just look back to the local districts and ask for more dollars.
Could you just quickly remind us?
Yep.
What do we spend $250,000 for?
So, that is paying a portion of our students' tuition that go out to magnet schools that are operated by CREC.
And the idea, and you say, and you say the CREC business model is unsustainable simply because it's underfunded?
It's underfunded, and they don't have bonding authority, they don't have taxation authority, they don't have a way to raise revenue.
Right.
It's incomplete.
So, it's been underfunded all these years by the state, so it's, CREC manages, operates, and builds a school, but it really, it's, it's, the burden is on the state. And, and this is, this is, should be no surprise to any districts of where, where we are. You know, the state, you know, is responsible for, 10 years ago, you know, telling CREC and telling the other rest, there's five rests in, in the state, not only CREC, each of the parts of the state have it, you know, that this was the decision from the outcome of the chef, you know, versus O'Neill stipulation to build these magnet schools, and not only in the Hartford area, but you've got Bridgeport, New Haven in there. So, we are in the same situation that the other rest around the state are also, well, some of them are feeling, we're more so...
Much more significant.
Much more significant, because we're 35 districts that represent CREC, and over the past 10 years, we have just built, almost outbuilt, you know, the magnet schools. So, these are discussions that I have with fellow board members around the CREC, the board table, because there are 35 districts that are, that, that make up the CREC, and so this is something that we talked about at, at Lane.
I'm just trying to make people aware of the meeting we had and the conversation that's going on.
Yeah, we will have a conversation more further with this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Give me a second. I was just given sad news, but I'm happy to remember my friend. So, a longtime board member, he was, Ray Dry passed away on St. Patrick's Day, and I knew him all my life, and he was on the Board of Ed from 1960 to 1987, and of nine of those years, he was Chair. And he was one of the kindest, smartest, lovely people I've ever known, as was his whole family, and his, Sarah was a very, very good friend of mine, all through Central, and Henry James, and Simsbury High. And so, his obituary, the family has kindly included us, and the ability to make a donation to Simsbury Public Schools for the arts program, which is very, very nice, but the obituary will be in the paper, and it's just a nice, I, I love being able to take a moment and remember him, because he was very, very kind to me all my life, and he did a lot of great things in dedication to the town, so thank you. That's all I have for that. Moving on, we can approve the minutes of February 26th. This is when I get wrong, because I don't really go... 26th, February 26th.
Move to approve.
Thank you very much. Second?
Second, but I see February 27th on them.
Oh, I'm looking at my agenda. Katie, you're killing me, you're killing me a little bit here.
I don't know which one's a Tuesday.
February 27th would be our agenda, we are...
Move to approve that one.
We've got Tom. All those in favor? Opposed?
I'll abstain.
I'll abstain.
Thank you all very much. And moving on to Personnel. Neil, please.
We have two retirements of some really special educators in the Simsbury Public Schools, and the first one is Helen Tobaka, who is a reading intervention teacher at Central School, 20 years in the district. Principal Beth Hennessy has been in mourning on this one. Helen came forward just as effective and respected an educator as, across that entire faculty, and touches every classroom teacher, because it's the reading intervention of the students in all of their classrooms, and just as a wonderful partnership. So, Helen has decided that this June will be her retirement, and I'm in mourning about the next one, which you could see is Jan Ferrier Sands, who presented to the board not long ago, as, in her role as a team coordinator at Simsbury High School, but her primary role has been a world language teacher, a Spanish teacher. She student-taught with us, got a job, and stayed for 39 years.
Yeah, we can, we'll figure out some... She can't go, I say no.
So, Jan, she was a great leader for me when I was principal of the high school, and as you know, former Teacher of the Year a couple of years ago, just a really special person, and it's time, after 39 years, to end the classroom part. We are going to try to convince her to stay involved with the teamwork after we, after she retires, and we'll see how that goes, but we don't wanna lose that expertise if there's any way that we can hang on to it. So, the motion is, at the bottom, if someone could make that motion, we accept, we'll to accept these retirements.
I would move that we accept the retirements of Helen Tobaka and Jan Ferrier Sands with regret.
Second.
Anyone have anything else they wanna say? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Very sad.
Yeah.
And thank you very much, and as Jan Sands says, every day, pick your five things that you're thankful for before you even start your day. So, I guess our fives are a couple of these for both of them, for all of their help in education of our students. Now, we have an acceptance of a gift from Central School, PTO.
Okay, first, two gifts from PTOs. The Central School PTO has got a gift of $3,400 to help offset the costs for parents of the annual Camp Jewel Trip for 5th graders, and we would ask your approval of this gift.
I would move that we approve the gift.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Gotta love Camp Jewel. Thank you very much.
And our PTOs.
Our PTOs, they do it every year.
They love Camp Jewel.
And the next one is a gift from Terrifil PTO of, valued at $5,775, and that would replace the existing slide and make some other repairs to our playground structure, and again, we would ask for your approval of this as well.
Move that the proposed gift of $5,775 to Terrifil School from the Terrifil PTO be approved. Second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you again, PTOs are fabulous things. Thank you very much. Oh, we're moving on to, due to the closure of school for spring recess on April 10th, I would like to see if we could make a motion to cancel our April 10th meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent, so, glad we have a serious board here. We are moving on to our information reports. Next Generation Accountability Reports.
So, this is an annual report that we provide to you in regard to our performance that the State Department of Education puts out regarding data and other areas of indicators that they track over time. I wanna be very clear, this is not new data to us in regard to the performance on our Sback and other testing. We've been using that data since August, but we didn't get this report from the state until the last week in February. So, it pulls it all together, and at that point, we can make comparisons with other districts. So, this report tonight will give you an overview of how, how we did and how we stand in comparison to others. So, as you can see, the Connecticut State Department of Ed has a variety of purposes that serve us through an accountability system, and you can see that the, one of the major ones is that it does satisfy our federal and state requirements under ESSA. When you, we look at the Connecticut Next Generation Accountability Systems for our district and for our schools, you'll see in your folders tonight, there is a district, I'll point it out in just a few minutes, but what it does is certainly provides a much more complete picture of a school and a district. It guards against the narrowing of curriculum, it expands ownership of accountability across our staff, it does demonstrate progress. What you'll see in just a few minutes is our growth of our students, so that's an important piece, that's part of the federal and state legislation, and certainly a tool to guide and track improvement efforts at the district and state. So, this slide gives you a...
Excuse me, Erin, just one question about that second bullet point, guards against narrowing the curriculum and tested subjects. What does that mean?
Means that the, when we test, when you look at the Sback and it's in ELA, English Language Arts, or it's a math, a lot of the components, we're integrating reading and writing across the curriculum, the math expectations, we're trying to put the onus of these assessments across our content areas, so that we're not just narrowing it to just English Language Arts, or just to math, that the entire curriculum that we provide to our students is helping them respond to the Sback assessment.
Thank you.
So, as you look at this picture of our progress, there's really, I'm gonna point out about seven different aspects of this. This is an overview of our district as a whole. As you can see, our accountability index is an 83.2, we'll come back to that in a few minutes, but as you look down our accountability, every district based on, you'll see in a few minutes, the 12 indicators, is given a whole accountability index score. You can see that in the second or third column over, around participation rate, we don't have any participation rate under 95%. In fact, most of our participation rate is either 97, 98%. So, when you look at the next column under achievement gap, as a district, we are identified as having a science achievement gap, and I'll talk through that in a few minutes. At the high school as well, an a science achievement gap, at the middle school, a mathematics achievement gap, but there are no noted achievement gaps stated in our elementary schools. Graduation rate is not a problem across, really, the district and the high school, and then there's areas to really celebrate when we look at our categories. We have three schools this year, schools of distinction. We have Central School, Latimer Lane, and Terrifil School, meaning they're in the top quartile of schools across the state, and so that's something to really celebrate with our schools. The other piece that I wanna point out is the purple, where you can see Simsbury High School has an accountability index rate of 90.1. That's an extremely high accountability rate, and I would suspect that they would be a school of distinction, except we have an achievement gap. When you have an achievement gap or a participation rate problem, you're bumped down a level. So, you can see that the high school came out as a Level 2 school, but we're third in the state in regard to New Canaan, you can see right at the bottom that's noted, Darien and Simsbury. New Canaan's was 90.7, Darien 90.3, and Simsbury is a 90.1. Both of those districts, New Canaan has a science gap, and Darien has a participation rate under 95%, so they were bumped down.
Strikes me, we're in the top, we're the same as the other guys, basically, we're all 90. something. And we still have an achievement gap, and they do too, so there's no one better.
Right. It's a hard...
Is it just, you said, you said it's a rate question in science, is that...
No, what you'll see is, I'll show you that in just a few minutes, of, it's, it's, our achievement rate is put against the state, and so if we are above the state rate in achievement gap, then we're identified as having an achievement gap. You'll see it, you'll see it in the picture in just a minute. So, I'm gonna take you one step further when we're looking at our district accountability rates. I've pulled out both Derg A and Derg B index rates, and you can see, Derg A schools, they range from 89.1% to 80.5%, and then Derg B, there's actually five other districts that I couldn't fit on the slide, but Derg B districts range from 86.4% down to 80.1%. When you look at, on Derg B, the... When you look at, on DIRG B, the Guilford, Farmington, Trumbull, and Simsbury, we're all within 1% there. So although we do show as five in DIRG B, we're still very close to the others. I'm going to take this another step forward for you as we put both DIRGs together. You can see that there are 23 districts that I'm putting in this comparison, and what this is showing is that with this, we look like we are at number seven. But take a look again at number four, five, six, and seven, Guilford, Farmington, Trumbull, and Simsbury, we're all within that one percentile at that point. So this is where we stand. We fare pretty well. We always want to be in that top third percent, and we are there out of those 23 districts. So I'm going to take you into the 12 indicators. As you can see from here, there's a variety of areas that they're gathering data on and marking progress, all the way from academic achievement, academic growth, participation rate, chronic absenteeism. We are also talking about career and college readiness, graduation rates, post-secondary entrance rate, physical fitness rates of how our students perform, and the arts. So I'm going to ask you in your folders, you do have something that looks like, I think it's, looks like this. It's got a front and a back. So you can't really see it on the screen, but these are all 12 indicators. That brings us to that 83.2% as you look at that. And I'm going to show you the next slide that shows us how we performed from the 2015-16 school year to the 2016-17 school year. The arrows that go across mean that we were within 1%, either plus or minus. The arrows, obviously, that are pointing up show some growth. The arrows that are pointing down show some bit of a decline in the work. So what you can pull out of here is that certainly our, you know, when you look at our last year's performance, there's some areas that we're looking at. We're looking at, we always go right to the arrows that are pointing down. We want to know where have we, you know, had any kind of decline and what is that all about? And we can certainly see that science performance for all students and high need students did decline. The problem is that that was the last iteration of that assessment. That test is gone. So there will no longer be any more comparison to that. And in fact, it'll take two years.
And one other piece on that, and it's not an excuse, but the overall scores in the state of Connecticut went down significantly. So Simsbury, I mean, I'm thinking about the cap in particular.
Yes, it did.
We had the highest score in the state.
Yes.
Two years in a row, but our overall performance, for some reason, went down 10%.
Yeah, close to 10%.
Something like that when we went to an electronic platform.
Yeah.
So all that plays out in this...
But everybody did.
Algorithm.
Everybody did.
Very strange.
Well, it's really, really good to see here.
Hard to compare apples to apples that way.
The math arrows are all blue and up.
Yes, yes.
Every one of them.
Yes. And we hit a lot of, you know...
That's good.
Lot of focus in that area.
We had a lot of focus last year because of our pilots.
And, but we did not have a math and focus program in effect for 16, 17, did we?
We had it piloted for the second half of the year, in some places, not in every classroom. So that is, we were excited to see that as well. What we were questioning, and we're trying to get, you know, we've been working on it since September, is the ELA average, the growth of students for all students and for high need students has declined. And it's certainly an area that we want to find out, you know, continue to pay close attention. We've done a tremendous amount of work so far this year in regard to data teams, looking at data, using our STAR assessment for both reading and for math to try to figure out. It's one of the best predictors of how our students may perform on the S-Back, and we're using that data pretty consistently over the course of the year.
Really demonstrates to our teachers that area of growth, right?
Yes.
In a numerical sense.
Yes.
That they can really focus differently with their students than we have in the past. So those assessments, I think, are really changing conversations for teachers and teams of teachers, which is interesting.
So, and it's interesting, it's not growth just for those students that are struggling the most. It's growth for students across the board, it's for everybody. So if I was a student that was a high performing student, and my growth rate was supposed to be 18 points, but I only grew 14 points, I didn't hit what I needed to hit. And so, but if I was a lower performing student, I might have needed to get 38 points, and if I got 25. So everybody has a growth that they have. And this is new. This is something that the S-Back has brought to us, that we're beginning. It's only the second year that we've had the growth ability to look at. And the other area that we're continuing to look at, and it goes with what we were talking about at the Board of Ed Curriculum Committee in regard to school avoidance and that kind of thing, is chronic absenteeism. And it's an area that we continue to be concerned about. And it's not just at the high school, it's across all grades, that all of our elementary, middle, and high school that we're looking at.
What's the definition of that?
Of chronic absenteeism? The number of days?
10% of days. So anything that's 18 days or more of absence, you're considered chronically absent.
So let me ask further on Jen's question. What are some of the factors that contribute to? We just sat through Curriculum Committee and talked a lot about...
School avoidance.
School avoidance and that. So what were some of the...
There's certainly anxiety, mental health component to some of those, a number of those students who, you know, are, it's anxiety over attending school as opposed to like a truancy issue, which is just you don't want to go to school. And that would tend to be more of a high school issue, the truancy, and yet, you know, we don't see as much of that. It's, you know, this is a target, we're trying to get some good comparisons to other like districts on this. We do, we do see a little bit of a uptick on this. And what we see is students who are chronically absent in later, now that this data is being looked at more closely, if you're chronically absent in eighth, ninth, 10th grade, you've been chronically absent since second, third, fourth grade. So it's really trying to target now, as soon as students at a young age start demonstrating chronic absenteeism, why you see elementary social workers in the budget, something like that.
Extremity on that work.
Really engaging with families to stop that pattern. Because what we've now, this is not data we looked at super closely before until this became, it is now something that we're starting to understand the patterns and something that we feel like we can maybe get a better handle on over time. But it's definitely a new frontier a little bit, and a lot of conversations at our elementary principals and our secondary principals about that.
Right. So you can see on the sheet that was in your folder, 4A and 4B, chronic absenteeism for all students, you want to have it less than or equal to 5%. And for all students, we're at 5.3%. And for the high need students, we're at 12.7%. So high need students are inclusive of our special ed, EL students, and free and reduced lunch kids. So again, principals since the beginning of school have been working closely and working for ways in which to address that issue. So as you can see with this information that we've gathered, it's not anything that new that we didn't know when we received the data early on, but we want to continue to look at our ELA growth for all students and for our high need students. We want to address the math achievement gap at the middle school, and we're working hard with the math and focus there as well. But that's certainly an area of focus, and chronic absenteeism for our all students and high needs. We want to continue to focus on our physical fitness and on our arts access. Interestingly enough, physical fitness is really how the kids do in fourth, eighth, and 10th grade in regard to, Isabel will remember doing the sit-ups and the push-ups and all those kinds of things. We did make some nice growth over this course of this year, because one of the things that was not included in our scores were the students that took PE during the summer. So when they tested them in the summer, those numbers were not submitted. So they were this year. So that was a good thing. And the arts access, another area that we found is that the state does have particular numbers for each of the courses, and some of our numbers were not in line with what they were pulling. And so we got to make sure we were aligned with that. And I think, as I said, the new generation assessment is going away, or I'm sorry, the new generation science assessment is coming. Old science test is gone. Field test this spring, 2018, real test in 2019. So we won't have two years of comparable data until 2020. So you won't see it until, like, if we're doing it in March of 2021, the comparison data of science. So...
Is that assessment at what grade levels? Same grade levels?
Same grade levels.
Five, eight, and 10?
11.
Five, eight, and 11?
They did move it to 11.
Okay.
Yep. And then on the bottom half of this page, it gives you a little bit more information. I'm going to describe the, a school or district having an achievement gap, if it's substantially different from the average statewide gap in any subject area, and likewise with a graduation gap. A graduation gap is not our problem, but you can see on the bottom of the page that you have, we have a yes achievement gap outlier, and we have a yes, and you can see it points down. I know it's hard to see, but it's because our size of our gap in science was 17.9, and it needed to be under 16.6 or below. And you can see that our ELA gap is certainly well below the 16.7 as a state, and we're close in math, 17.3, and we have to be under 18.7. So, and again, no issue with our participation rate. You can see all of our participation from 95 all the way up to 99% in our participation So that's pretty much our next generation. These are all accessible on Ed's site, on the Connecticut State Department of Ed. You can get these, this information, and you can make all kinds of comparable views regarding other districts. But the other piece that I do want to bring to your attention, this is also an annual piece, I typically do it in communications, but thought I would tag it on the end of this presentation, is this is our District Profile and Performance Report. You also have a copy of this. This used to be called the School Strategic School Profiles that you would see, but this is, it's about eight pages, and it certainly gives you, it pulls from every district, again, every district and every school is located and can be found on the Ed site, Connecticut State Department of Ed website. These are also now all posted on our website as well. Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions?
Ed site, thank you, Erin, for mentioning that. For those of you that are interested, that really is a good, a good website to look at.
Right.
I gaze every now and then.
Yeah, lots of data.
It's got very good information. Tom, you would enjoy that, Ed site. It's really good, a lot of good information.
A lot of data, a lot of comparable data.
Yeah, I'm going to take this home right now. I'm going to go to bed tonight, but I do want to ask, there's so much here we can't absorb, but of course, this means...
I know.
Can I just open it up to the second page, Educators by Race and Ethnicity? And I'd never seen these numbers before, and it's pretty remarkable, the comparison between our educators by race and ethnicity compared to the rest of the state. Is that something that we even talk about?
I'm attending the minority recruiting fair tomorrow night. We make an effort to recruit more diverse teaching force whenever we can. It's a challenge. Often educators of color will choose to teach in a district that is more diverse itself. And so I've had a number of candidates that we've offered contracts to who maybe simultaneously have an offer from a district that profiles differently than ours, and their choice has been often to work in... So we do have some teachers of diverse background, not as many as I know I would like as the Director of Personnel, and it's something I talk about with our principals all the time. But, you know...
It's a challenge.
It's a challenge.
It's good to hear, though, that we're focused on.
Actively pursuing.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other? Thank you very much. Great report. Appreciate it. There's a lot of things, it's so helpful to go through it, and the more times you go through it, the more we'll understand.
We only wish that the state could get that to us a little earlier. That would be a little...
It would be nice, but thank you for getting it to us as early as you could.
But we appreciate it.
The SHL fuel cell proposal.
Okay. So it's been several months. Back in December, I updated the board on some of our energy efficiency projects and savings efforts and gave a brief teaser on this project, and I wanted to give you an update on our progress that we've been making and getting very close to being able to make formal recommendation to you all. We actually have some gentlemen with us tonight who I think shared some of the cards with you. Ryan Byrd and Steve Wells from Du San Fuel Cell are with us tonight. I'm just going to start out again with the most basic level of, you know, some people are familiar, have heard about other towns or schools that have fuel cells, but basically it would be a self-contained unit that would use natural gas to create electricity for the high school, and there would not be a combustion process, and there's not a concern about noise or what is the byproduct of that process. So that, just wanted to kind of get that out right up front. The proposal that we've been looking at is with, as I said, Du San Fuel Cell. The corporate headquarters is right in South Windsor. They do this for locations across the country, but they do have a center where they are able to monitor, which is again, right here in our state, and they also provide, you know, the maintenance and response. Giving you a couple examples close to home of high schools, Hampden High School, Middletown High School that they've worked with, they worked with Yukon Eastern and Western and private entities and other locations, east and west coast. So that's just a little bit of background. Talking a little bit more about what we would be proposing to do and why we're interested in this. This process would be theirs to finance and operate this fuel cell, and ultimately, we're talking a pretty small footprint of about 550 square feet roughly. Some people may have seen them, they're really similar almost to a, like a storage unit where we have some of those around, you know, around our schools where we store equipment in. It's just kind of a nondescript shape, and it's not that much larger than the emergency generators that we have outside of Simsbury High School. Somewhat larger in scale. There'd be absolutely no capital or cost to us to enter into this, and we are ultimately looking at a power purchasing situation for 20 years. So we're not owning something, we're just buying electricity for our high school. And the financing includes the program that Eversource works with. This is called LREC. We have ZREC, which is Zero Emissions. This is the Low Emissions Renewable Energy Credit Program. So they were successful on our behalf in getting that as part of their funding process. From a savings and financial benefit point of view, I guess the best way to describe it is there are some programs, or there have been programs in the past where you would be buying power at a fixed rate for 15 or 20, 20 years. In this instance, it's not a fixed rate, it's really, I guess you could say, a fixed savings level. So we do our procurement for our school supply of electricity, and whatever that rate is, we currently have a two-year contract, it'll be 1.5 cents less per kilowatt, and the next time we go out to bid, it'll be 1.5 cents less than whatever that pricing is that we're able to obtain on behalf of the district. So we have estimated that at savings of about $30,000 annually on, just on that, on the pricing. The other aspect that's really of interest to us, and Steve Twitchell, as you recall, our supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, is always looking for areas that we can improve our buildings and the efficiency of our utilities. And... efficiency of our utilities and maintenance of our plant. In this case, the byproduct of the fuel cell is heat. And it would otherwise just dissipate into the atmosphere. In this case, we can actually benefit financially to both heat the hot water for the building as well as to offset some of the heating costs of the building by capturing that heat. So, there's, that, that would all be installed for us at, at, at no extra cost. So, we were, we've engaged an engineer that we've been working with, an outside firm, you know, to also help us and has helped us vet that. So, that, that cost savings is also estimated at about 30,000 per year. So, the total estimated savings would be about 60,000 per year. And it's obviously based, is going to vary depending upon usage in any given year and the type of winter.
Quick question there. This is, these are savings for the operation of, installation and operation of one, one fuel cell, right?
This is right. This is coming, this is because...
The natural question is, I mean, that's a lot of money for one fuel. Can we get more of these?
Well, I guess...
Why they handing out the cards?
I guess the...
It's paying for a full-time equivalent.
I want one at my house.
I guess the sizing of, of this location is what probably makes it the best fit for our district in terms of both amount of electricity that is used, the, the sizing of this unit can basically handle the, the high school. And that dwarfs all of our other schools in terms of usage. So, can't speak to the, to the, to the other sizes that you might offer.
If I may, this is the smallest sized fuel cell that we do build. And Burke is completely correct. The balance between operating costs, the usage has to be there.
Got it.
Years ago, Connecticut allowed what was known as virtual net knitting, which would allow a town like Simsbury to say, well, we use some power in this building and some power in the middle school and some power, and we'll pool them all together virtually. They no longer do that. So, if you have the ear of your legislators, you can encourage that because...
They're trying to move that forward again, aren't they?
They, they are. And it very possibly might come back. But right now, the, the program that Eversource has, coupled with the state of Connecticut, allows the high school to definitely capture on this. The only other facility in town that might qualify would be the wastewater treatment plant. They might use about enough power as well.
And I've, and I've been in touch with our town colleagues. And, and I know that that is something that they, that they are considering. That's something that has been done in, in neighboring towns.
Burke is maybe for these gentlemen, but is heat the only byproduct?
So, there are some small emissions. To Burke's point, the way it generates electricity is the same technology that they use to provide electricity and heat aboard the Apollo spacecraft.
It's a chemical reaction.
It's a chemical reaction. And so, the, since there's no combustion, there's very little other emissions. But there is a small amount of CO2 because as it gives off a little bit of free oxygen or, or free, I'm sorry, free carbon, it bonds with oxygen and creates CO2. But it's so negligible that in the state of California, we don't even need a clean air permit.
Yeah, so it's like you can't emit CO2.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's negligible.
Would we have appropriate insurance in place and, you know, liability protections and all that?
So, that's, that's a good segue in terms of kind of our next steps and what, what we've been working on. Shipman in Goodwin has been reviewing a pretty lengthy document, legal document with their counsel. And all those types of, of questions are being, you know, vetted. Yes, they would have to ensure, you know, their aspects of it. I know we would maintain our own insurance because it would be on our, on our site. It wouldn't change the fact that we'd still have coverage for our site.
But let's say this thing blows up, you know, we're going to have appropriate insurance protections and so on.
Yes. And those are, those are the types of, of questions. I think we're probably within the next week, we should have the sort of final draft version where I can update the board on, and kind of the, some of those major aspects that have been fully vetted.
The other question I would ask is, you know, is it, can we have a, something in a clause in the agreement that gives us an accept at some point if we just decided we wanted this thing to go away for some reason?
Those are, yeah, those are some of the, those are some of the terms that I know have been reviewed. And I can be sure to give you the, sort of where, where that final...
10 years from now, something that we don't want to...
Yeah, that was going to be my question. It's sort of close to what Mike's offering. Just can you speak for a second on why a 20-year term?
I, I think that's really been their standard model for this financing.
Takes that money to pay for it, right?
If, if the school were to buy one outright, it would be about 2.2 to 2.5 million dollars. And your payback period based on the cost you're paying for electricity now would probably be somewhere between eight and 11 years, depending on how you amortized it. Most towns can't justify spending that much capital or leasing or financing something for that long. So, we take the risk upfront and install the unit, purchase the ZREC credits, all that sort of stuff. But to make that work with our math, we would be in your concern.
And so, you know, the, the, one of the ways that they get, they get some of the, the money back is that the demand charge savings, that's kind of the key thing that is not passed on to us. That is how they help to recoup the cost.
So, so if we bought it, we paid the 2.2 million, we'd capture all that. Have we run those numbers? Just out of curiosity?
I, I have not, I have not seen a, a local entity that has done that.
You probably have a chart that says that if you, if we just buy it from you and contract, then here, here's the net to us.
You bet. And we could do all the study to give you a full...
Send it to Burke.
I, I could give you...
My job is just to ask questions.
It would be about 2.2 million dollars to buy it and install it. It would cost about $60,000 a year for the town to pay for the maintenance on it, and about $60,000 a year for the town to purchase the natural gas from Eversource to, to run it.
And in return, we get so many kilowatt hours of...
In return, you're going to get about 4 million kilowatts a year, plus the heat, which is about a $30,000 in your district. So, you know, if you think about what your avoided rate is, if you're paying 10 cents a kilowatt for 4 million kilowatts, your electric bill's about $400,000 a year. Do the simple table. It's going to come out to about a 10-year payback for the town if they were to buy it.
You know, I think, I would just feel that we should at least look at the numbers and know what they are.
Okay. We were interested in this option in, in part, obviously, because we weren't going to be having to front capital dollars that would compete with our other...
But if we, you know, look, if we can borrow at whatever we're borrowing at right now, 3% or something, and we get a 10% return, then I'm in. You know, it's, and it's not, look, we've spent $2 million on lots of things. And I don't know whether it would fit in. But, you know, I, I think if I was, if I were the Board of Finance, I would want to see those numbers, too.
Right. Let's see what process was. Any other questions?
Just, just, and just a couple of quick comments about, about, about the process of what's, what's to come.
We're digressing so quickly.
So, this is, in terms of, of process to follow up, the folks at Shipman, due to the long-term nature of this proposed contract, they actually recommend that we get approvals from, from the town. And also from the, from the concept of you'd be granting a license or access rights to this property, that there's also a, a planning 8-24 recommendation that that gets done also. So, I have definitely reached out to our town manager and knowing that they would have the, their legal counsel would, would certainly look at the, the charter and say, okay, what are the, you know, what are the groups that have to, that have to make votes for the process? Ultimately, it would, it would come back to this board to authorize signature, the final signature. So, there is a, an interconnection process with Eversource. Just wanted to point that out. So, there's definitely several steps left. And the goal is to have our council, once we have that sort of final version, share with the town's council and then kind of make that as efficient as possible so they're not duplicating efforts. So, something that we'll continue to cooperate closely with our town boards and staff and then report back. But just wanted to make sure if there were other questions, that you had a chance to, to ask them. So, we can be sure to kind of summarize them before we bring it back to you.
Great.
I'm just curious about what sort of access you need to either maintain it, or is this stuff, people going to be on the property during the school day, during after-school hours when the kids are on the field? Like, what's that look like, I guess?
The area that would be, would just basically be fenced in so that they're, you know, they could gain access. It would not interfere with the school operations. I don't know if you have any other comments about projects that you've done?
No, I mean, it, it takes in makeup air from the outside. So, there are some filters that have to be changed every about once a year. And that's typically scheduled with the property in there.
Okay. So, it's not like you're on there on a rate, out there on a regular interval or it's just...
No, no, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Where exactly are we looking to locate this?
So, we're going to, we're going to fine tune it. But if you think about behind the new gymnasium where the cars pull into that sort of circular area on that sort of right-hand side there, there's some very large area of asphalt. And it's near, we have a, one of the emergency generators is just...
Where everyone hangs, the kids hang out all the time.
Where all the kids get dropped off and picked up.
Yeah. And then there's a, there's a generator just a little bit farther back.
What happens when a lacrosse ball hits the box?
We will...
I'm really not kidding.
[inaudible]
We will be meeting with the high school principal and talking through, well, you know, you could do it over there, you could do it over there. But space does not appear to be the, you know, the real, the real problem. Maybe just...
Studies if you can.
Okay. Good to know, good to know.
You don't want to crack and pummel. You don't want some kid to go up and fling.
Thank you, Burke.
Thank you very much, Burke. Anybody else? I am just very excited that we're looking at alternate opportunities and we're looking at ways to save money any way we can. And appreciate the efforts and the interest. It's, yes?
And I don't want to add to what Burke said because it was a very good overview. But to your point, this is, generates about the same amount of power as a five-acre solar farm. But it only takes up about 400...
That's a good point.
I mean, that's, that's kind of the way to think about it. It...
Really?
Yep. It's the equivalent of five acres of solar panels, but it only takes up a tiny amount of space.
We're not talking about that, but thank you very much for that information.
And the other thing is, Waterbury, they installed a couple of last year. They were commissioned last year, but they're having their official ribbon ceremony, actually tomorrow. Senator Blumenthal is speaking in there. Waterbury's the...
Of course.
And you're all invited to attend. I know it's short notice, but it is available to you because all of the people who, like you, made that decision are going to be there as well. So, if you wanted to ask some questions of them.
Look for it in the paper and the news, too, so we can keep tracks of that. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming out.
Appreciate you being here.
Being here.
On that said, any more public audience? Thank you all for being here. So, our next board meeting is Tuesday, April 24. And before that, we have our Board of Education and Finance presentation to the Board of Finance on April 6th?
5th.
5th?
6th.
See, this is my problem?
I thought they said 6.
At 6.
At 6, we have, April 5th, at 6.
In the amphitheater.
In the amphitheater at Simsbury High School.
That's public audience, public hearing?
Public audience.
Yes.
Public meeting, public, public hearing. So, it'll be both, it'll be both budgets and public hearing if anyone wants to participate. All of us are welcome. Everyone in town is welcome. And we'd love to see anybody who would like to be there. And I guess that's all we have to say for tonight. So, that said...
Move to adjourn.
I have one thing I would just be remiss.
We have one moment. She did have her hand up before you adjourned.
I do have my hand up.
I take it back.
I do have it up, Mr. Goman.
Just take your breath.
I would be remiss if I didn't, didn't mention that March is National School Board Month. Now that the month is over, I just thought about it. And so, I would like just to thank all my fellow board members for all their service and their work they do to make Simsbury a fantastic district that it is. So, thank you. And your service doesn't go...
Burke might not be saying that. We're going to ignore that.
Thank you too, Burke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Goman.
Burke's getting excited about going to San Antonio with, where he can sit with 6,000 board members.
There you go. Be thankful for every one of them.
Yeah. I move to adjourn.
Second?
I second.
All those in paper? Thank you very much.